Good morning and welcome to this meeting of the Adult Health and Social Care Policy Committee. My name is Councillor Argentio, I am the Chair of this committee. Thank you for attending. And the meeting today is open to the public. The meeting will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast the meeting. We have received one public question, but Mr Nessa Rafik is unable to attend today, so we will send him the written answer in due course. Please may I request that mobile telephones and other such equipments are switched to silent, so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting. There is no fire test planned for today, there was one earlier. So if there is an emergency evacuation, please follow instructions from the town hall staff and the assembly point is to disqualify. I will start with asking the members to introduce themselves, starting on my left.
Hi, I am Laura, Councillor McLean, Member for Walkley Ward.
Good morning, Julie Groco, Member for Stockbridge, Jennifer Don.
Morning, Councillor Lewis Milson, I'm a Member for Crooks and Crosspool Ward and Labour Group spokesperson for this committee.
Councillor Steve Ayers, good morning, Grates Park Ward.
And I'm the Mosborough Ward councillor.
Councillor Sophie Thornton for Beecham Green Ward, Deputy Chair of the Policy Committee.
Councillor McGruney, I'm the councillor for Woodhouse Ward and responsible for all this kerfuffle, I do apologise.
You are a troublemaker, aren't you? Can I ask officers starting on my left, with Alexis?
It just comes naturally, you know, I haven't even had to practise.
I taught your children, so I know.
So I'm Alexis Chapel and Strategic Director for Adult Care and Wellbeing and Sheffield City Council.
Thank you Chair, I'm Sarah Bentham, Assistant Director of Legal Services.
I'm Fiona Martinez, I'm Principal Democratic Services Officer.
And also Rachel on the tech side, thank you Rachel. The agenda report for today's meetings is available on the council's website, there are also some copies, some hard copies here at the front, if you need one, please come and help yourself and also Agenda Item 6, there are, there are copies of that. So apologies for absence.
We haven't received any.
And exclusion of present public, there is one item on the agenda that contains a restricted part, that's Item 12. So my suggestion is that when we get to Item 12, we will take all the questions that pertain to the open part of the report and if members have any questions on the closed part, we can stop the webcast, take those questions, ask members of the public to also leave at the point and then we can come back. I will remind you when we get there. Item 3 is declarations of interest, are there any? Great. And Item 4 is minutes of last meeting, these start on page 11 of the pack, I hope the page numbers are the same as the one I have. So I'm going to go through them page by page, if there are any, anything that you need to raise on the minutes, I would be very grateful if you raise your hand. So we've got page 11, page 12, 13, 14 and 15. 16, 17, 18, 19 and 20. Can we take those meetings as a true record of the meeting? Thank you very much. Item 5, as said, we did receive a public question and we are sending the written response to Mr Rafik. And Item 6 is appointment to subcommittees. I think there is, you were all sent a, this item and it's also been published, I don't have a copy in front of me, so I can't, oh, thank Fiona. So basically it's just appointment of people to the Health Scutumy Subcommittee as per the paper sent around. Are people happy to approve that? I think there is like a slight misprint where Councillor Steve Ayers is not named as the deputy of that Subcommittee, so we'll have that kind of amended, just to be 100% sure. So it's basically Councillor Diane Hirst from the Sheffield Community Councillors is now on that Subcommittee. Okay? Brilliant. Thank you.
Has the question been distributed?
Yes, it was sent yesterday and it is in the pack.
Right, thank you, not spotted it.
We also talked about it in the pre-meeting, I think, yeah, yeah. So Item 7, members' questions, we didn't receive any this time, so we're moving on to Item 8, which is the work programme, that is on page 21 of the pack. So as we've discussed various times, we've had kind of, you know, the work programme is flexible, it's a work in progress and we have moved a couple of items from this month's committee to next month's, just because it fitted better with the waiting for the Autumn Statement from central government for those particular items. Are people happy to endorse the, to note actually, the work programme as is? We happy? Brilliant. Item 9, so this is Adult Early Intervention Delivery Plan Strategy and Delivery Plan Update, it is on page 41 of your packs. I have given 15 minutes to this item and that includes members' questions, so I'll, I'm sure your people are used to reporting it on here, so thank you. Please, can you introduce yourselves when you speak?
Yes, thank you very much. Hello everybody, my name's Tim Gollins and Assistant Director for Adult Health and Wellbeing Department in Mental Health, I forgot my title, Mental Health Safeguarding and Wellbeing. And I've got with me Zanya Stephens, who's the Head of Communities, with responsibility for early and family hubs. The report we've got for you today covers prevention and early intervention and it lives on Item 6 of the Adult Social Care Strategy. It's an update, covers five recommendations, two of them are for agreeing and then three are for noting, I'll briefly explain what they are. The first one's to agree to a development of a partnership group that's citywide, led by adult social care, that will help prevent, reduce and delay the development needs for adult social care. The second item for agreeing is the development of a community connecting or bridging service, which is a partnership we want to develop with communities, which is Zanya's area. The other items are for noting, which is the growth and development of Sheffield Directory, the ongoing development of technology-enabled care in adult social care and then finally there's a recommendation for reviewing the strategy in six months' time. Briefly, in terms of the strategic element here, we've got committees that looked at our early intervention prevention programme back in March 22 and we agreed that way, that is the way forward. And then the Adult Social Care Strategy embeds early intervention and prevention as its core thrust. Part of that is, the wider context to that is of course, development of early intervention prevention across Sheffield and across South Yorkshire. In fact, there's a South Yorkshire Integrated Care Partnership Board, they are moving towards more early intervention prevention. We've got the Health and Wellbeing Board Strategy and Children's and Neighbourhoods are developing a place-based initiative all around preventing and reducing the onset of social care needs. The Partnership Board that we want to develop emphasises all of that work and will help us focus on what adult social care needs to produce across the city to help delay and reduce people's growth in adult social care needs and we just want to set up a board to enable that to happen. Sheffield Directory has grown remarkably since we got permissions to move forward in its development, it now gets 50,000 hits a month, where it was originally only 2,000, for example. And I want to focus now on the collaboration with communities, where we have a particular problem with our first contact services in the sense that growth in demand to our adult social care first contact services has increased by 46% over the last five years. We also have 32% going through to receive care and support services after contacts and only 20% of contacts to the multi-agency safeguarding hub resulting in a safeguarding episode that needs to be investigated. So there's a lot of demand coming through first contact, it isn't about adult social care. One of the ways we want to address that is by developing a service with our community colleagues that will help us meet some of those individuals who have quite complex multidisciplinary needs but not adult social care needs. And the service we want to invest in will help us link into Zanya's services and Zanya perhaps can give an outline of what the early help services in communities is in a moment. Finally then, the technology-enabled care, we are investing quite a lot in technology and we had a very successful national event that was in Sheffield, so we're getting noticed on a national scale for that. And there's a number of initiatives that we're investing in that will help us meet people's needs in a more cost-effective and a way that promotes greater independence. And finally, we want to just keep updating on progress in all of these areas on a six monthly basis. With that, happy to take any questions.
Questions? Councillor?
Thanks Chair, thanks Tim for the report. I'm really interested about the involvement of Primary Care Sheffield in the proposed new partnership board, is that correct?
So the Primary Care work is on the mental health side, we're developing a relationship with Synergy and I think that's coming up in the mental health report that I've got next.
Right, okay. So with the information and advice and where, just really interested in where Primary Care sits in an integrated sense in all of these things and what kind of work has been done with that sort of access to information and so on involving Primary Care alongside first contact, as a sort of parallel front door, if you like.
Yes, so we are working very closely with Primary Care Sheffield and I suppose the Primary Care Networks work right across adult social care, from our long-term teams to our access services as well, so it's a more complicated relationship. We have stronger links with early help services and Zanya's teams who work very closely with Primary Care Sheffield. So in a sense, the bridging service that we want to develop strengthens our communities' links and our links with Primary Care Networks. So that's the development there, but we also work with Primary Care Networks across our long-term teams, because they're essential to all of our customers. I don't know if Zanya would like to just explain a little bit about the links between the bridging service and Primary Care Networks.
Primary Care Networks have been instrumental in many of the early help projects that we've been doing, as you've already identified, they are the front door necessarily in that prevention scape and identification of needs for vulnerable adults. We've been working across the city with Primary Care Networks and introducing them to team around the person, which has been really influential in supporting those long-term action-planned needs and which we've had numerous GP and PCNs attend those meetings or are involved in making those action plans. So it's a really joint health and social-wide determinants of health. That's ongoing work and it will take time to completely roll out to all Primary Care Networks. As you can imagine, we've got different kinds of levels of joint work across the city, so some areas are stronger, but we'll continue to work with them.
Are there any other questions? Thank you, thank you so much for the report and yes, brilliant. So we have some recommendations, these are on page 42 and Tim kindly has already read them out. Do people want me to repeat them? There are three for noting, two for agreeing. Are we in agreement on those? Brilliant, thank you ever so much to the team for all the work. We have Item 10, Tim is staying in place because he's presenting on this too, so it's Adult Care Mental Health and AMHP Service Annual Report. Again, I have 15 minutes allocated to this item and Tim take it away for us.
Thank you again, I'm presenting this report to, with some different colleagues, so let them take their seats. Perhaps I'll let them introduce themselves, we've got James and Rachel, so James?
Hi, good morning everyone, I'm James Silverland, I'm Head of Primary and Community Mental Health Transformation in Sheffield. I'm also a National Advisor with NHS England for Adult Community Mental Health Transformation as well.
Rachel?
Does it want to?
So this, I'll introduce her. So this is Rachel Civeter, who's the Independent Chair of Synergy. So this report then is around, its purpose is to update you on the progress of a number of items on the mental health services, particularly development of prevention and early intervention model and also the AMP report, which I want to go through. So there are five recommendations again to you in this report, so you're first of all asked to approve the annual report, which is the first approved mental health practitioners' report, then endorse a new approach to prevention early intervention, which focuses on partnerships with the ICB, Integrated Care Board and also Synergy, which is a voluntary sector alliance and we'll talk about that in more detail in a moment. But it all, the report also talks about the way we want to develop our work on hospital discharges from acute wards across the city and continuing to embed new arrangements with our mental health services. So first of all, the AMP report I want to mention, which is an approved mental health practitioners team that works at Longley Centre at the hospital and they have a specific remit to work with vulnerable people who are at risk of, at risk of harm to themselves or at risk of harm to others. It's the first report we've had and it does a number of things, it talks about the performance of that team, what it does and it tries to explain the significance of delivering on our key statutory duties in that area, the main of one of which is delivering a 24-hour, 365-day-a-year service. I'm happy to take any questions around that report. The second area is the, sort of a new recovery model in partnership with ICB and Synergy, we'll come back to that in a moment, I'll just mention the other areas first. The joint model for discharges of people from acute wards and there's two developments in that area, the first one is a social work team that we've got working with SHSC, Sheffield Health and Social Care Trust and the wards and an interim bed service where hopefully people get discharged once a care and support plan has been done and people are waiting for a placement to be developed, there's sometimes there's some delays getting things in place, so these interim beds will be a place where individuals can go in the meantime, freeing up one of the hospital beds for other people. We're also focusing on a continued, continued work to reduce hospital, sorry, residential care admissions, because often people are quite young when they have mental health conditions and they don't need to be in residential care, but we overuse residential care at the moment, we are reducing that through the Promoting Independence Project. And we also need to develop a local market of providers, because often we struggle to place people who have very complex needs, often learning disability, mental health, physical disabilities and personality disorders, that complexity makes it quite difficult to place people, so we're trying to develop the market. And finally, we've brought back the mental health social work teams from Sheffield Health and Social Care Trust, that work is to embed those new practices and those new approaches with those staff is ongoing and there's some details in the report about how we're doing that. So at this point, I'll probably just turn to my colleagues and I want to talk a little bit about the new development in terms of developing mental health, early intervention prevention services, because there's a new commissioning arrangement with the ICB, the Integrated Care Board and in turn a new relationship between us and Synergy, which is a voluntary sector alliance. So I'll let James start and then Rachel.
Many thanks, Tim. Just to give a little bit of background context, across England, there are significant changes afoot in terms of how community mental health services are provided. We acknowledge nationally that with mental health systems are sometimes difficult to navigate, to access, we have divides sometimes between different service types where individuals may be deemed too complex for one service, yet not meet the entry criteria for another. There's been a programme and a national piece of work, of which Sheffield was an early implementer, to actually test new ways of providing care support and treatment in terms of serious mental illness and also complex needs. Some of that work is very much around putting the community back into community mental health and not having distant, hard-to-reach services, but having those services based and placed into local communities where people live that are easier to access, how we actually join up mental health needs much more closely with physical health needs in primary care, but also looking at the wider social issues that we know people will face and that gives a nice link into the work with the voluntary sector. We know certainly from a health perspective in Sheffield, the commissioning relationships we've historically had with the voluntary sector haven't been conducive for supporting the voluntary sector in terms of sustainability of funding, also the voluntary sector wishes to collaborate, yet we have processes that actually don't support collaboration, they actually drive competition between providers. Equally, how do we try to ensure that every voluntary sector organisation has an equal voice and an equal opportunity and not that it's sometimes the bigger or selecting organisations? So over the past couple of years, we've worked to try to say, worked to try to firstly, ensure that there is new additional funding recurrently made available to the voluntary sector, secondly, to start to relook and re-profile our relationships as well, so that we don't put out tenders. Actually, how do we have an alliance approach where we bring together voluntary sector organisations and give them the powers to be able to say, here's a theme that we need to work on, actually you come to us with the solutions, but it's actually become sustainable. Equally with that, how do we get representation, not just from large, citywide or even regional, national providers? We know there's really, really amazing voluntary sector organisations in the heart of local communities, we want their voice to be heard, because quite often, they're the unseen people who do an absolutely fabulous job, yet we don't, they don't always access or get the same access to some of the funding opportunities. So it's very much how we've supported to level that out. What I would say before I hand over to Rachel, the work that Sheffield's done, you know, we don't celebrate enough, but actually the modelling that's been undertaken's attracting national attention from ADAS, from the Local Government Association, I think Sheffield's very much at the fore in England in terms of our approaches, but also the incredible work that's been undertaken in the background to date to get us where we are today, where we now have a formally constituted and thriving voluntary sector alliance called Synergy. But I will stop my Dorset tones, I could just take over the meeting and I'll hand to Rachel.
Thanks James, I'm up and running now. So yeah, I thought it'd be, sorry, oh, thank you. So like Tim kindly introduced me, I'm the Independent Chair for Synergy Sheffield Mental Health Alliance and I wanted to come, Tim invited me today to talk a little bit more about Synergy and the governance structure and what Synergy is, so you've got a real true understanding of that. So like James said, the last couple of years have been building an alliance of voluntary sector organisations, so we've currently got 111 voluntary sector organisations within the alliance and that's a combination of both the larger kind of community anchor organisations that some of us or probably most of us in the room have heard of and also a massive number of smaller grassroots organisations. As well as that, the alliance involves people with lived experience, so they're commonly like to be referred to as people, experts by experience or EBEs. So yeah, the EBEs and the voluntary sector organisations, by being part of Synergy, we have that collective representation and partnership working across with local authority, with NHS trusts and part of the wider transformation of mental health in Sheffield. Essentially, we kind of here and our focus is to put people with mental health needs and the people who care for them, because we recognise that carers are a key part of that, at the centre of what we do as an alliance and working with partners. So like I say, the past two years, we've been growing and developing Synergy and the governance structure. To do that, we are, we're now incorporated as a not-for-profit company, limited, and we have Primary Care Sheffield as our banker, so that allows us to have some support and the accountability with regards to finances, so although Synergy hold the contracts, Primary Care Sheffield hold the funds. And that's been a real kind of transformational way of working, I don't think it's been done anywhere else to press, so we're really excited about that. We also have myself as an independent chair, so I'm not affiliated to any organisation, whether that's statutory or voluntary sector organisation, so I can hold our members, our organisations to account and also when I go into that partnership working with local authority, NHS, I can also kind of challenge that and make sure those relationships are working openly, transparently. We've got a lead accountable body, so they deal with the day-to-day running of the alliance and that is Rethink Mental Illness, so although it's a national charity, actually they do have a presence in Sheffield and they've got really good working relationships with all those 111 members, organisations that are part of Synergy. We've also got a partnership board of members, so what that looks like is that we have eight voluntary sector organisations, again, a combination of the larger community anchors and the smaller grassroots organisations and also two people with lived experience, so experts by experience who sit in that membership, so they're representative of our collective alliance voice and direction. We are just starting to deliver a contract for peer support workers, some people might be aware of that, which has been co-produced, co-designed by Synergy and also working in partnership with Primary Care Sheffield and the wider mental health transformation and that's kind of running and going live at the moment. And I thought it'd be really useful to maybe point out and understand some of the real benefits that I've seen in my post, I think I've been in post about 15, 16 months now, of an alliance and a different way of working. Voluntary sector organisations like Tim and James alluded to, there's been, there's been competition inevitably within that kind of voluntary sector organisation with regards to tenders and bids and so on and so forth, but actually having an alliance means that we've got a sense of ownership and collective voice and direction and it means that there's a sense of trust being built both with those organisations and then that translates over in. And then that translates over in our representation with the partnership working with statutory organisations. What that means is, because we've got that trust, we can really respond dynamically to the needs of communities, particularly marginalised communities. So organisations, quite often smaller grassroots organisations in Sheffield, whereas previously, they may not have been able to or had difficulty kind of accessing funding to provide that support to people in those marginalised communities. By being a part of an alliance and having that collective voice, they've been able to do that. And that's a huge difference compared to what has gone before. The other part of it is that experts by experience have got a voice. And it's the first time actually that people with lived experience feel like they've been heard. So, yeah, it's...
So it's quite popular. Does that answer your question? On the second issue, about service delivery for voluntary sector agencies and service level agreements, I'll perhaps let James and Rachel to answer that question. But at a strategic level, we are developing a memorandum of understanding between the council and the ICB and Synergy. It's not in place yet, but we're working on that subject to agreement today. So that'll be at a strategic level. More operational, we'll have contracts that we hold between the council and the voluntary sector organisations. And we will work to transfer those or work with Synergy on our best to transfer them across to Synergy partnership.
Happy to. And thank you for your question, councillor Roan. In terms of offers, we need to make sure that there is standardised offers that are available in all wards of the city in terms of mental health support. Equally, we know, you know, we have different wards, but they're not all the same in Sheffield. There are different needs. And a key bit is the building on the work that we've already done in going out into local communities and listening to people in those communities to say, beyond the mental health treatment interventions, actually, what are the local needs that are important to you? And actually, how we work with Synergy to make those more bespoke offers that actually fit local needs identified by local people in local communities. So I think there will be variants, but actually, where there is variants, it's how we identify some of those health or social inequalities and how we best respond to them.
Hi, thank you for the question. Just coming on the back of what James has said. So the PIS port framework that's just been rolled out, so just to give you a kind of really tangible understanding. There was a lot of mapping work done to understand within that what voluntary sector organisations, which ones that came forward that were interested in providing and delivering that, where they sat across Sheffield, to make sure that actually we've got that balance and understanding. And what we found is that because the voluntary sector organisations got that ownership and that collective voice, they've been able to communicate that. So rather than it being competitive, actually, it's been far more collaborative and making sure that we've got that breadth and stretch and covering and making sure that those needs are being met in different areas in different ways.
Thank you. I'm going to take councillor Rooney's and councillor Meele's questions together. We're a bit over the time allocated, so if we could be as succinct as possible with the questions, then.
Thank you, Chair. My knowledge and involvement in this service area is probably somewhat out of date. But could you tell me what happened or whether it still exists? The crisis house, which there was a lot of faith, a lot of belief that that might provide a solution to some of the gaps in the service areas that we had. And if that is what referred to in terms of interim care support, does it still exist? It was based in Nether Edge.
Do you want to take that one? Yeah, conscious of time, happy to pick up a conversation outside of this meeting. The crisis house does still exist. Urgent and crisis services in the city are currently going through a transformation as well, so that they can become more accessible. Equally, since that time, probably just over a year or so ago now, we also created the Sheffield Support Hub. That's the crisis cafe based in the city centre that's available seven days a week and into evenings. So there is the support that's there. There's a wider piece of transformation around to improve urgent and crisis offers, to ensure that it links together, conscious of time, more than happy to pick that up offline.
That would be helpful, because I think quite often, as councillors, we end up with people who are in crisis. And frankly, I'm always worried that I'm going to do the wrong thing and make the situation worse. So, you know, that's a real dilemma that we face on quite often, on a daily basis. The other, again, as I said, my knowledge is probably out of date. But there was a serious discussion taking place about the reduction in the number of beds, bed-based services. I think it was Rowan, the Rowan ward and one or two others. But that was met with resistance from some of the service users, because for many of them, it was like a sanctuary, a safe place. So I'm just wondering where we are in terms of the reduction of the number of beds, bed-based services.
Okay, so that's a health-based question. And it isn't covered in the report. And I should also mention in terms of the crisis house, the interim beds are not crisis beds. So they're not the same thing you were talking about. So I'm quite happy to have that discussion. I perhaps think, given time constraints, we ought to perhaps take...
Yeah, I think we'll move on, because it's not really a question for this committee, has it? It's a health kind of question rather than local authority. Thank you. Councillor Meele.
Thank you, Chair. So I'm interested in, I know this is still early days and it's a new model and it's a new integrated way of working, which, by the way, I think looks very impressive in terms of integration. If a hypothetical case study, how would the outcome look for a person in this kind of situation? Where, let's say, they have, say, PTSD, waiting for some help with that. There's a long waiting list to get on the continuing PTSD help. So let's say they're in a position where they're waiting for that kind of intervention and also developing other clinic or health complexities at the same time. So this person might be in a severely restricted life situation where not going out, not earning any money, struggling to pay their rental mortgage and risk of losing the house. And everything starts piling in on them. So they've got already an assessed mental health condition, if you like, but also there's the everyday life piling in and making their life unbearable. How does this new model help someone like that? Because at the moment, there doesn't seem to be much help for someone in that sort of position. What would be the difference?
Thank you, councillor. That's a really, really great question. We are all moving towards making access to services much more easier, also becoming much more outcomes focused and actually moving to ensure that anyone that accesses services has a personalised care and support plan that looks holistically at the needs. So if we fast-forwarded to April, what would that case look like? Someone would be seen, they would have their initial assessment to understand not just the presenting mental health condition needs, there'd be an outcome score that looked across much more broadly in terms of their housing situation, finances, activities, befriending. If someone was waiting for a clinical intervention, that doesn't mean that they're just sat there. It's how we come together, but how we use the work with Synergy, with community assets as well, to identify those wider needs and how we start to support those so that they can be met. In terms of outcomes as well, we start to be able to track that, so we can show the distance travelled. Equally, there starts to be an early warning system as well, that if someone starts to deteriorate or they've got new and emerging needs, we can be able to respond to that much more quickly to identify and pick up and support.
I'll just add to that, I guess fundamentally what it might mean is that there is a local voluntary community sector response that we can find for that individual. Whereas at the moment, I don't think, it's not likely that there's a specific voluntary sector response. And that'll be possible because Synergy will be able to make more of the money that we provide them with by, through their local connections and networks. I hope Rachel agrees with me.
I'll just come in really quickly, because it's really pertinent to your question. What it might look like, and it's already happened. There's been a waiting list project where people waiting to access some kind of support. And there's a long waiting list of actually being seen by some voluntary sector organisations. And actually, what they found, I think it's 68% of people that were on the waiting list not only improved with their symptoms, but actually didn't need to continue waiting on the waiting list. So some really exciting things already been happening in the voluntary sector and that partnership working. But what it would mean is that the voluntary sector are going to be embedded into primary care networks as well. So actually, like PIS port network, PIS port workers, there'll be that conversation and communication between the statutory services and voluntary sector to ensure that the needs are being met in the voluntary sector and in the statutory services, wherever they need to be, wherever that fits best for that person.
Thank you. I think councillor Swan has a question, but she's going to email. We've kind of more than doubled the time that was allocated to this item. But it tells you how important and how kind of how many, you know, questions people have about mental health and how it works on the ground for people, in particular in communities. So thank you very much for that. The report comes with recommendations, these are on page 70, I'm going to read them out. So we are asked to approve the approved mental health professional AHMP Annual Report 2023, endorse the approach to prevention and early intervention noted as section 1.6, so that recovery can be promoted across communities in line with our strategic vision. Notes implementation of discharge from hospital programme to enable people experiencing mental ill health to return home from hospital when well. Notes the work being undertaken jointly with the Integrated Care Board and Sheffield Health and Social Care Trust to develop local services for people with multiple care needs. And notes the progress with the return of mental health social work teams. Are people happy to approve and endorse and note those? Thank you very much. And we're moving on to item 11, which is on page 93 of your pack. Thank you so much for your presentation. So we have Sam, Justine and Lewis presenting this item. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair, and morning, committee. Yeah, I'm Sam Martin, I'm head of commissioning in the integrated commission of public health service. I'll let my colleagues introduce themselves.
Yeah, morning. My name's Justine Adams, I'm the interim lead for the Changing Futures Programme.
My name's Lewis Kidgey, and I'm program called NESA focusing on co-production at Changing Futures.
So I'll be as brief as I can in terms of introductions, folks. So just a short reminder, the Changing Futures Programme is a programme we've got, we put a successful bid into government to get some grant funding to deliver, runs until 2025. And it's a programme aimed at transforming the way that we support a smallish number of very vulnerable individuals who live in our city, and that's people who've experienced a rough sleeping, mental illness, drug and alcohol abuse, crime and domestic abuse and homelessness. So a really, really vulnerable group of people who are historically very excluded from, I guess, the life of the city and the services that we provide. The report will talk you through how we're doing in terms of progress so far. But I guess this year, we're up and running with the programme now after the kind of initial start-up gears. So there's quite a lot of progress that we're making now, both in terms of direct support to individual people. So we've got caseworkers working really hard to support some of the people that we've got in the programme, but also the wider system change where there's been going on, both in terms of learning and development, particular projects looking at things like cuckooing, which we know is a big issue in the city, and things like the development of the co-production service, which is something that, I'm hoping in a second, Lewis will just spend a couple of minutes telling you about his involvement in. Because the programme, the Changing Futures Programme is really built on values, which other colleagues have spoken about with the other reports this morning about hearing the voice and involving people with lived experience of the services and the lives that we're talking about here in the development and the running of the services that we provide. So we've got some really good learning from that as part of the programme. Maybe I'll stop and let Lewis just do a little bit of an introduction and talk a bit about that, about his part in the programme.
Good morning, everybody. Yes, my main focus is the co-production service at Changing Futures. And now we are fully mobilised and gained lots of traction with the people and partners and organisations that we work with. I guess we have two focuses, and that's capturing the voice of those people that have had lived experiences of the disadvantage we're focusing on at the moment and the progression and development of those individuals as well. Because we recognise that as part of our offer, we need to support them to fulfil their own potential. We really are working towards full co-production, which means transparent and meaningful involvement in the work streams we're currently focusing on. And we've had a really good experience developing a move-on project for women in the Sheffield City area. And our associates were involved in that from nose to tail, from sort of inception through to, well, it's not currently up and running yet, but they will be involved in evaluation too. We have been doing a positive activities project, which is focused on a £600,000 pot, where we were inclined to try and attract smaller organisations and charities to apply for those pots of money to develop activities for people that are experiencing disadvantages underneath their children's shoes umbrella. And that's us. Thank you.
So just in terms of the report that you've got today, we're at a point in the programme where we're moving from the kind of getting it rolling and delivering stuff part and starting to get some of that learning into thinking about the future. What do we do when the funding that we've got from government runs out in 2025? So the report sort of starts to pivot a little bit towards that sort of direction. So some of the recommendations are getting an endorsement from the committee around, not that we've yet pinned down the money, but there's a general commitment that the work that the programme's done has been useful and that we would like to find a way to sustain that into the future. And as officers, we're then having lots of conversations with the partners who are part of the Changing Futures Programme. It's not just the council, so colleagues in the NHS who've been investing in the mental health aspects of the programme, colleagues in the police and the probation service who've also got a really key stake in some of the work that we're doing. So we're really keen now over the next few months to be going and having some of those conversations with those partners to secure a kind of future model of, you know, how do we turn the learning from the programme now into a future service delivery model and strategy for people with multiple disadvantages that we'll see as good into the next five or 10 years. So that's what some of the recommendations are starting to turn us towards, as well as just giving you an update on what we've done so far. So I hope that's useful and, you know, happy to take some questions.
Do we have any questions? Wow, it's such a good report, is it? It is a really good report, and I know that we've had kind of briefings on this. It's been very useful and I think it's really important. It's a very small number of people, but it's people whose expectancy of life is often really low. So the impact that the programme is having and hopefully is going to have is really important. So, yeah, I'm very keen that we find a way to continue the learning and the good stuff. So the report comes with recommendations, these are on page 94. So we are asked to agree to the need to incorporate the changing future delivery approach and tackling multiple disadvantages into future policy development. Requested that strategic director of well-being and care provides the committee with updates on progress against the deliver plan in March 24. Approve the development of citywide strategy for adults experiencing multiple disadvantage led by the Changing Future team. Endorse the need to sustain specialist resource for those experiencing multiple disadvantage in the city and request that the strategic director of adult care and well-being brings proposals to future committees aligned to the co-production strategy, agree a committee on 19th December 23 on how co-production will be resourced.
Sorry, shouldn't that say 19th of December 2022?
Yes, it is. Yeah, we already jumped ahead. Thank you. So could we correct that, Fiona? It's in the recommendation. Thank you for spotting that. I was just noticing how the strategic director title wobbles between the care and the well-being being swapped over. That's what my eyes were on. So are people happy to agree those? That's what my eyes were on. So are people happy to agree those?
Agreed.
Brilliant. So we are on to item 12, which is on, thank you so much. Yeah, and thank you for the event last week. That was really good. So it's on page 107 and can I just correct something I said at the beginning? I think that at the beginning I said item 12 contained a restricted section, but it's in fact item 13. So this item is unrestricted totally, so people can ask whatever questions they want on the whole thing. And thank you Andrew for presenting.
Good morning, everybody. Can I just, it's good to follow such a lovely plan. Sam's team have done a great job. It's a really, really good report. I'm hoping to work well with ourselves and Adult Future Options and Learning Disabilities. The report you can see in front of you, gender item 12, has been pulled together by both Adult Future Options and Commissioning, and in particular Christine Anderson, who isn't here today unfortunately. So I'm presenting this to yourselves today. There are two recommendations which I'll leave to yourself to the end. The purpose of the report is to ask the learning disability strategy called Our Big Plan, which sets the scene for improving the quality of lives of people in Sheffield and their carers in the city. And it's been developed in partnership with the learning disability community, carers, and reflects the priorities for the next three years. The proposal, the purpose of the report is to set that scene across the city. It promotes, it's about promoting and enabling partnership working. It delivers priorities against the five themes of the city, including safe and well, achieving, independent, connect and engage, aspire and achieve, and affect and effective. The strategy outlines our pledge to strengthen the individual's voice in the city. The report is, I think, quite straightforward and you've heard a great deal of these views before and opinions in this report is the strategy that fits behind this. There is something called the Adult Future Options Transformation Plan, which is working in conjunction with the Financial Recovery Plan that Liam is going to present a little bit later. But this is to seek approval for this strategy, please. Thank you.
Are there any questions? It's a huge piece of work. So thank you very much first of all to you and the team for this. And it's really kind of important for the direction that we're going to go as an authority. Councillor Thornton has a question.
It's not really a question. It's just a thanks, especially for the way that the themes and thematic work has been set out. And it shows really clearly what we're doing and where we're setting to go. And I just thought it was a really excellent way to lay it out and very helpful in terms of seeing the trajectory of this piece of work. So thank you for doing that. And I just think that it's really positive. So keep on doing what you're doing.
Thank you. The one thing I do want to address to yourselves and be clear is that this is pulled together by officers who know what their job is, know how to do their job. They seek approval from yourselves, but most importantly, they seek approval from the people that we're working with because it's the views of the individuals. The co-production in this plan has been exceptional. It continues to be so. I was fortunate enough to go to Kering a few days ago, which is just down the ex-autism exchange down the bottom. Just on the bottom of the road. And it was brilliant to see some of our opportunities in action, where our plan was being designed by people on that day. They were contributing to where we're going. And it was a great feeling to say that, yeah, it's not just words on a paper. These are actions that have taken place for quite a while. They continue to take place. It works very well with our partnership board, which you've agreed and recommended. And we approved that approach in the last, I think that's, we set that re-back up again, but three months ago. And that's going exceptionally well as well. So thank you for your kind words. I'll take those back to everybody concerned.
I suppose with the people that have fed into this as well, is it, have we already, or can we make sure that we feed back the actions that are taken? Because I think especially for people who are coming and giving us their voice by their own experience or their, you know, their family carers. A lot of the time they feel like they are feeding in, but not necessarily hearing back sometimes. I mean that just more broadly as a generalisation, not specifically to do with this piece of work. So it'd just be good to make sure that that is properly fed back, so that it's not just people feeding in, that it's cyclical to feedback on actions taken, if that makes sense.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that's one of the bonuses of the learning disability partnership board. The way we set it out at the moment, there's a really, really good group of people have come together, including carers and older carers and younger carers as well, and actually carers who are, who have a learning disability or a physical disability themselves. We are working with carers in a different way to get the voice and the message across. You have all been aware of our approach around named worker, which is that contribution where we continually try to work with people for longer and a lot more in depth with them. So we're building up that relationship. That approach to feedback is a continuation within our review section as well. So the more we review people, the more we work with people, the opportunity to feedback is valuable. We don't want to do this work without it being what the right work is. And that's a big group of people concerned and we're trying to bring all of those things together, from 16, 17-year-olds with a learning and physical disability, up to an 86, 87-year-old with a learning disability. We continue to offer the support around everybody that we have, but feedback is absolutely vital to us. Thank you.
I have councillor McLean and then councillor Anderson.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to highlight really, it was on page 1, 3, 5 of the pack. It's under the theme about being connected and engaged. It's in the column about what we could work on next. And it says work with councillors to find ways they can better hear the voice of people with learning disabilities. And it was really good to see that in there and just, you know, the committee's really pleased about all this work that's been doing to really hear the voice of people with learning disabilities. And I think, you know, as members within this committee but across the council, that's something that we should be considering. So just to endorse that really. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Anderson? Thank you Chair. I just want to pick up one little thing, which, I mean, this is partly a, you know, a really, a really positive thing about the direction of travel with enabling people into paid work and remuneration for skills and that whole side of things. But I did notice the comment about there's no disability support at the job centre. And that that's still sort of, that's still future work. I'm just wondering, is there anything nationally set down about what kind of support ought to be provided at job centres? Or is this, I mean, is this outlying work that we're looking at doing here? Is there anything statutory at all that supports people? Or is this just purely us? I think it's a really, really essential thing and really good that it's been brought up.
Yeah, thank you for pulling that point. It's really important. There are several answers here. One is, yes, there should be, there should be a disability employment officer in every city. That's as it should be. I think the reality is that it's not always easy to access and we are working very closely with DWP. They are part of the learning disability partnership board, so we're addressing those issues as we go along. But not only are we just addressing them as we go along, we're not waiting for somebody else to tell us how to do something. We're starting to work with our lifelong and education colleagues within the city. And a part of the re-ablement group is not just around paid employment. It's offering people the opportunity to taste a session, to work in somewhere, to gain their confidence and assurances and reassure their families at the same time. And from that, we then build and build. But in answer to the first question, yes, there should be a disability employment officer in every city. Our relationship is quite good actually. I think they're overwhelmed and maybe something this is, we need to take forward in two different ways, not just waiting, but we're also doing our own productive approach around it. Thank you.
Councillor Rooney, and I will close it after this.
This is more for my benefit really. Is it possible to have a structured chart of what the service looks like these days? And I'm going back to when I was sort of more heavily involved. There was, we were at the point of a divorce between the care trust and the council, because the service at that time was split across the two organisations and it all went rather pear-shaped, shall we say. And the divorce was rather bitter and hurried, in my view. And I'm just wondering what the service looks like now.
Andrew, you answer that. I also think Alexis wants to come in.
We have the welcome pack, which has been provided to members. And that provides the structure of adult care and particularly in terms of the mental health social work and how that looks now. So what we can do from the committee is provide and reissue the welcome pack, which has the structure within it for members, which might be helpful, I'm thinking, because we've got, Julie's now part of the committee. And then alongside that, what we're also going to do, I think, is just outline some of our arrangements with kind of partners across the city, which is also part of that as well.
Sorry Chair, can I just say that would be useful, but can we have it in the written form and not on the computer? I find it difficult to read the screen. Paper's best for me.
Yes, thank you. I have mine printed out on my desk, so I can consult it all the time. Yeah, if you have any kind of specific need for the, you know, for how you want your paper, just let us know and we'll make sure that the admin know and they'll provide stuff for you. Thank you so much for the report. So that report has two recommendations. They are on page 108, I believe. Sorry, I'm just going back to it. And those recommendations are to approve the learning disability strategy called The Big Plan and to request that an update is brought to committee in 12 months' time, along with an update of progress made on delivery actions. Are people happy with that? Are members happy with that? Brilliant. We now, thank you Andrew.
Thank you very much, everybody. Nice to see you all. Thank you.
Brilliant work. Thank you. So we are on to item 13. This is the item that has a section, the last four pages, that is restricted. So we're going to have the report and then open to questions. If members have questions on the part of the report that is from page 187 to 190, we will stop the webcast and take those questions after the, you know, any question on the previous pages. I hope that makes sense. Thank you Liam and Jonathan.
Thank you Chair. My name's Liam Duggan. I'm Assistant Director for Care Governance and Financial Inclusion.
Morning. Excuse me. Morning. Jonathan McKenna Moore. I'm the Service Manager for Business Planning and Governance.
So we've got two related reports for the committee this morning. One on the budget programme for 2425, which I'll cover first. And then the second one, and which, as the Chair said, has got a closed part B attached to it. And then the second part, which is around our financial recovery plan, our routine update, which Jonathan will introduce. So the budget programme for 2425, this is our annual budget setting process. The report describes the new financial pressures facing the Health and Social Care Policy Committee next year, new income available to offset those pressures, and then the savings proposals proposed to bridge the gap between the cost of service delivery and available resources. It should be noted that this paper is concerned solely with the mitigation of new financial pressure arising in 2425. So we're going to need to undertake additional work next year to mitigate any underlying pressure that exists this year and which will carry forward into next year. And that's the purpose of the next report. Okay, so budget pressures for next year are set out in section two. They total £32.5 million. Some of those pressures are based on assumed national living wage rates for next year and inflation increases. The national living wage rates will be clarified by government in the Autumn Statement later on this month, following which we will need to review the exact pressures for next year. There's a number of financial, income opportunities arising next year, which will offset those pressures described in section two. They are set out in section three, £23.2 million worth of income. And when we net those off, that leaves us with a budget gap next year and therefore a savings target for the committee of £9.3 million. Savings proposals are described in section four and in more detail in the closed appendix, in line with all savings proposals coming to policy committees this year across the council. The savings proposals this year are all in line with our vision and strategy. They are based on four broad themes, income opportunities, standard annual uplifts, which we see each year, promoting independence, best use of commissioned services. And then there are some small technical budget adjustments as well, where the budget can simply be adjusted to reflect either income or spend. As I say, there is a closed appendix, part B, which sets out the savings in more detail in line with the arrangements for other policy committees for this budget round. I'm happy to take any questions on the open part.
Do we have any questions on the report? I know we've had quite a lot of briefings on this and we've had a quite a long session specifically on the closed part. I assume there are no questions on the closed part, unless someone tells me differently. So thank you so much for the presentation. This report comes with two recommendations. These are on page 176. They are both for noting, so it's a note the new financial pressure facing adult care and wellbeing and integrated commissioning for 2425, and the new income available to mitigate them. And notes the measure proposed in the report to mitigate these pressures and recommends that this to the Strategy and Resources Policy Committee. So are people happy to note those as groups look at the proposals more in depth? Thank you ever so much for all the work.
Could I just clarify what the, what that recommendation to Strategy and Resources Policy Committee actually means? Does that mean that those things are then sitting with S and R and no longer with this committee?
As far as I understand it, I think it will be going to S and R.
You've learned that, yeah.
For approval and then it'll come back to us for approval and then we'll go to full council, is how I understand it.
I think the next meeting where all of the proposals from all the committee will go to S and R. And then we'll, you know, obviously the groups have to decide how they're going to move in terms of all of the proposals for the whole budget, come back to individual committees and then the budget is presented to council. I think that's the procedure, isn't it?
Yeah, I think the hope is that they will come back to committee. But I do think we do need to be clear that the obligation in the constitution, the reservation in the constitution is for S and R to recommend a budget to full council. So I think last year it did become necessary that not all proposals did come back to committees before they were recommended by S and R, so that is a possibility.
So Chair, just to clarify, that the nothing, no action that we're taking today in recommending this to S and R will preclude us having further input on future saving, on agreeing future savings?
Yes, that's what we agreed, isn't it? And that's why they're for noting, because all the proposals are with groups at the moment. So the groups were feeding into that conversation, including.
Belt and braces, so you're absolutely sure of the process.
Yeah, I can confirm that. The committee aren't prevented from raising their own future comments or concerns on these particular budget items, whether that be formally in committee or through representatives on S and R.
Councillor Duggan?
Yeah, I think it's like councillor Thornton said, my understanding is that we are responsible for putting the budget together. But the process of the council is that it has to go to Strategy and Resources, so that it becomes part of the whole budget, which that committee then recommends to the full council. So we should get the opportunity to continue to do work on it until we've got a proposal that is in line with the financial position that we have got to meet.
Yeah, I think we understand. We've discussed this at length and that's what happened last year. And ours did come back to us before. And ours did come back to us before they went to S and R anyway, and they will do this then. Yeah. So we are on to, thank you, Liam. We are on to item 14, which is the Adult Health and Social Care Financial Recovery Plan Update. And Jonathan, I think you've started on this.
Morning, thank you. So this is the Recovery Plan Report. As Liam alluded to, it's the sort of other half of the financial plan for next year. The distinction being, these proposals don't need to go through the business planning process and full council approval. This is addressing the underlying overspend that already exists in the budget. So Section 1 just explains the detail behind that. We have a overspend in year of £3.5 million and of that £1 million is planned to carry forward into next year. There's also a number of elements of funding, grant funding and one-off income that will either go into next year's budget as permanent budget or it's dropping out. And that totals £15.2 million. So we have a total of £16.2 million as the underlying overspend. So Section 2 just gives you the detail of what those different elements of grant funding and income are. And then Section 1.3 gets into the Recovery Plan. And there's a more detailed appendix for what's actually proposed for the savings required in that Recovery Plan. The largest element is in learning disability services. That's where our largest overspend is. And that's where we've put a lot of that new funding or one-off funding in this year. But obviously, when that comes out, it reveals the £10.4 million overspend that needs to be rest. And then we also have some smaller overspends, especially in Living and Aging Well. Then Section 1.4 is just a look across both plans. So it includes what's in the Recovery Plan and it includes what's in the business planning for next year, just so that you can, to reassure you that there's no duplication and we're not double counting savings across both plans. So I don't know if there's any questions.
Are there any questions from anybody? I mean, for people who were here last year, I don't think we've ever been in this position before. I know that, you know, obviously there are challenges there, especially in terms of long-term kind of funding in general to the services. But I think, you know, the way that this has been managed in terms of recovery has been really, we couldn't have been asked for more. So thank you very much for that. So there are four recommendations of page 192. So we are asked to note the ongoing activity to implement savings and, as agreed, under the 2324 budget and existing recovery plan and to note the impact of funding changes on financial position and recovery plan for 2425. To note the recovery plan of an institute to mitigate underlying demand and cost pressure in 2425. And finally, note that as part of the CTC assurance, the local authority must have effective budget oversight, accountability and governance. It assesses the impact of any budget reductions and whether the level of savings required will affect its ability to meet such reduties, including comparison with regional and national benchmarking groups. Note that a report will be provided to December 23 Committee, setting out an update and the next steps required. Are we all in agreement on those points? Thank you very much. Thank you to the team for all the work. And we are on to item 15, Safeguarding Annual Report. And I believe that Dawn, Janet? Is Dawn not here? It says Dawn on my note, so we've got Janet. Okay. Hi.
I like to do that sort of thing. Yes, my name's Janet Kerr, I'm Operations Director for Adult Care and Wellbeing.
And I'm the Chair of the Customer Forum.
Hello all. We're here today to present the Safeguarding Adults Board Annual Report, which I think you've seen. I think it's a good and clear report and it's something that is produced every year. So if I just go through some highlights, I think. So the Safeguarding Adults Board is a multi-agency partnership board that we're required to have under the Care Act. You'll see there's an introduction and an ending from our, I think scrutiny, I should describe itself, from the Port Leslie Smith. You'll see there's lots of facts and figures there and very clear graphs. I want to say we've got a very, very good person who deals with all that data stuff for us called Kate Sanders and she does an incredible job. Which also leads me to, one of the things I wanted to mention is there is mention in the report of safeguarding adults reviews and domestic homicide reviews. Now, domestic homicide reviews sit in the world that Sam Martin, who you met previously, works with, but we work very closely on that. And Kate provides a newsletter that looks across both, which is probably well worth people looking at if they're interested, but some very good information. You'll see there's a structured chart in there that tells you the people are involved in the board and then we've got the subgroups. So Adam is here, as he is, you're the Chair now, aren't you, Adam? Yeah, he recently took over as the Chair of the Customer Forum. There are a number of other subgroups and I'm probably testing myself remembering, but the Citywide Best Practice Group, there's a Safeguarding Adults Review Group. And I think there's a group that I've been less involved with, which has a health focus. But those groups meet regularly and report into the main meeting. I think the most, I mean Angela knows, I like to bring it back to people. And if you look in the report, there are some case studies and some mention of particular case studies. One of the things that again will come through during this report is how we've created the MASH this year. And I've been a big enthusiast for the MASH and what it might achieve. So one of the things we were asked to do was to, for the annual report, each organisation that's involved in the Safeguarding Adults Report are asked to provide examples. One of the examples, you know, I reminded myself that one of the examples we put forward was in relation to the MASH. So if I give a scenario or a situation that crossed over between ourselves and children about exploitation and within less than 24 hours, because the MASH existed, we were able to pull a meeting together and put things in place for the people involved in that process, some very practical things. Now, we would have pulled a meeting together previously, but we wouldn't have been able to do it that quickly and we wouldn't have been able to have those people already there in the room. The other example, which I think is interesting, particularly relating to changing futures, who've done a big piece of work around this, is around cuckooing, which I think became an increasing problem in Covid. And it's something that a lot of work is being put into, and as I say, particularly in terms of changing futures. The other thing you'll pick up from looking at the report is one of the things that the board's very much involved in is training. So they provide training across the agencies, which is useful because the training's very good, but it's also useful because it gets the people involved together to have discussions. I'll stop there because I'm not giving Adam a chance, am I? So I don't know what you want, if you want to come in there, Adam.
Yeah, like Janet said, quite a lot of the forum's work is partnership work. So what we do as well is we have service users, cameras. And one of the roles of the forum is to actually hold the, our partnership colleagues to get to account. So one of the things we did from the end report as well is, it might be in ending to this one, we're doing a couple of videos, but like partnership actually supports the safe places at Sheffield. And we've done a lot of work around the, and also with Transcend as well. Because we know a lot of time without one, it's the victims of it. And if you're in town and you're, I mean, a bit of a mental crisis, and you've got one of them safe place cards, it's actually a very good, and you can go to any of the shops. I think the example, it's got as a safe place and the off and on the back of it will be an ice number in case of emergency and they can contact that person and actually get them the help they need. So that's two of the things in the forum and we heavily value supporting as well.
Yeah, very, very positive work. It was nice for me when I, the reason I can sit in for Dawn is because until recently I was doing that job and it was nice going into that forum for the first time. So I saw a lot of familiar faces and Adam and I have worked together over a period of years. So I think any questions that people have, we'll be happy to answer.
Any questions? Councilwoman.
Thank you. I'm still mindful of an encounter that I had during the Festival of Involvement earlier this year with somebody who came along to an event, actually not to participate in the involvement event, but because they identified a safe place where they could come and bring a safeguarding concern about their relative who was in a residential setting. And they'd not felt able to raise this with the residential setting itself. And I'm just, I'm just still quite bothered that people are there in our system who don't feel confident to whistleblow and don't feel confident to raise their safeguarding concerns about their own relatives. Because actually there's an underlying worry about unfair evictions, which of course happened, I think, was it in Halifax, it was a case earlier this year. And actually, at the time that this person was trying to find a safe place to come forward, that was very much live in the news, that there'd been an eviction because of a safeguarding concern raised and it was deemed an unfair eviction of a vulnerable person. So I think reading all this is brilliant. And I do, you know, the director of travel is great and all the work done is great, but there are still, you know, isolated incidents where something isn't right. And I just wonder really how we totally get on top of that, how we provide that safe environment for people to raise their concerns without any worries. So do we take on more of the advocacy role so someone can come to the safe place and then they don't have to worry about it anymore? It's handled.
Yes, absolutely. So we wouldn't be, I mean, we wouldn't be contacting if that was a care home. We wouldn't be saying, this person said this and that's why we're coming here. We can, you know, we would do it in a way that it wouldn't be them, that, you know, they wouldn't be named and come to see you because X has said Y. But the other thing I think that's important, so there's when people raise concerns, but the other issue for me is around quality and us quality checking. So one of the things we've done recently is we've created the care homes teams. So we've now got the same social workers and social care practitioners who are going in and out of care homes, which I think is a really positive thing because they'll just pick up more general intelligence and be around and hopefully family members will be able, will feel able to say. But I understand that people might be concerned because that happens in all sorts of walks of life, but I think, go back to my first point, we wouldn't be announcing, we're here looking at this. And we can look discreetly and we can go in and we can have an eye. But if someone came to us with something like that, we would do some checking, but we wouldn't be going in with big banners announcing it. We would be doing the checking. We would be linking with our quality colleagues in Catherine's bit of the world. And, you know, it might be they've done quality checks recently, it might be that we just organise one of their regular checks, bring it forward. But I think if people can have the confidence to come forward, we could say, no, this will be fine. But that's difficult, isn't it, convincing people?
I don't know that as well, Janet, as well, is when we've done like customer forums, events with colleagues and things like that, and we've always said, from a forum point of view, we're not here to take the concern. What we can do is advise and signpost to the relevant colleagues. Because the forum's not there to take it, but if we, sure, we'll work with the forum, if we can translate as well, because a lot of time what we'll do is pick it up. And then if we're hearing two, three different scenarios like that, what we will then do is put a question to the best practice group and think, we're hearing X, Y and Z. Do we know what the date is telling us, please? And then we can help translate that entire process.
Yeah, and I'd forgotten that, Adam. One of the things the Customer Forum does is they have questions that they ask to the board meeting, don't you? So part of their meeting is about, right, what questions do we want to raise? And I guess often that's big picture stuff rather than individual stuff, but the Customer Forum have got a real, real view there.
Thank you. I think Alexis wants to come in here as well.
So in addition to this, to say that this obviously came up to the Festival of Involvement. And as was noted at September Committee, as part of developing our directorate plan, this was a key commitment as to how do we also offer independent opportunities for people to raise concerns? Because what we've got within the council is we've developed our care home teams, we've developed our quality teams and we've really developed our approach so that we are very open and transparent because we want to know concerns. We want to know issues so that ultimately we could, ultimately ensure, get to the point where, which is my ambition, that we have excellent quality servers right across all of Sheffield. And so as part of that, as part of the work that I kind of mentioned yesterday in my briefing, is that we are working with Health Watch and our colleagues to look at, how do we build in an additional framework so that actually what we have is that additional independence for people to raise their concerns linked to our safeguarding arrangements? And that's built upon that good practice so that people could know that there is a range of places that they could go. Ultimately, what we want to know then is the outcome of that, so that we can then ensure that no matter who raises the concerns to us, whether it be from members, whether it be from people of the public, whether it be from family members, is people want to be assured that we've got a clear and robust response to that. So that ultimately, people are safe, people are well and people are getting the care that ultimately will enable them to have the very best life, no matter what setting that they are in. So we've really taken on board the concerns raised and our response has been to is that how do we invest in a really wise way in going forward? So hopefully that's quite helpful and, you know, reflects, I think, that our commitment to listening to people. And actually, if I can say, the theme from today has been about how do we co-produce and listen to people so that ultimately we get the very best outcomes?
Thank you. And I can also confirm I sit on that board and we've had these conversations in there. But it's also about the kind of the partnership approach that is important so that every partner is dealing with safeguarding issues in the same way. And it's that those conversations are so important because we're all clear of what needs to be done at any one point. So we are only asked to endorse this report because obviously it's not a Sheffield City Council report, it's a partnership report that has come to us to endorse for the work done in the past year on the Adult Safeguarding Board. So I have members happy to endorse that report. Brilliant. Thank you so much. And we are on to the last report of the day, which is item 16, Occupational Therapy and Adapted Housing Delivery Plan and Update. This is another report for, just for noting. Because it's a progress report on something that we've already agreed. We've got a full house.
Hi, hi everybody. We'll introduce ourselves first. So I am Nicola Raffsel, Interim Assistant Director in Adult Care and Wellbeing.
And I'm Ian Menzies, Interim Service Manager for Occupational Therapy and Adapted Housing Service.
Hello, I'm Kelly Sedunds and I'm the new Assistant Director for Living and Aging Well for Short Term Services. So I'm just merely here to introduce myself today. I'm on Day Three.
Welcome.
Thank you.
I'm Sheldon Wosset, Service Manager for Citywide Care Alarms and the Enablement Team.
Okay, thank you. So we're here today to give an update on the previous report that came to committee last November and to go through the overview and the highlights. So we continue to have So we continue to have increased demand in occupational therapy team. We've taken some actions over the last twelve months and made really good improvements to reduce the waiting list. The team have worked really hard. Previously when we came, people were waiting eighteen months to two years in those timescales coming out of Covid. Now the majority of people are waiting actually less than four months, so that, that's a massive improvement. We've got the continued pressure of the DFG, which is the disabled facilities grant funding. We are closely monitoring that and we've reviewed the eligibility criteria, which we've attached as an appendix. We've reviewed this to clarify the funding in the criteria and also based on some questions that people had asked. So we've got reports there and Kelly will come back with an update and an annual report in the future to committee. Linked to the DFG funding in our report is the citywide care alarm service, which is on page nine of the report. There's some, some challenges additional there. We're moving to additional, additional technology, bringing additional costs. But Michelle's done a great job and actually attracted some income into the service, which has mitigated some of the financial pressures. Been doing some additional work for the Yorkshire ambulance service, which has attracted some funding in for us. There's lots of projects in this area going on to our technical tech programme. And again, Michelle and Kelly can bring a future update to a future meeting. Any questions?
Do people have any questions? Go for it, Miss.
Yeah, do you, sounds a bit strange this question, but how do you get the message out there to people that are living alone and don't realise that this service exists? Now, you might not believe that's true, but it is. I've recently moved on to an estate with bungalows due to my husband, but with probably the youngest on our street, to be honest. And since Covid, I've encouraged quite a few of them to, to get citywide alarms because they do worry about it. But I, I found it a problem, not a problem, because of who I am, I knew what to do. But I'm just wondering, do you think we advertise it enough, is basically what I'm saying?
I think we could do more because we have done in the past. We've, you know, we've had adverts on billboards and buses and things which we don't do anymore. But I think you're right. We do a lot of work from hospital, obviously from discharges. We do do a lot of community work, but it's generally by word of mouth. And I think you're right, there will be isolated people that we're not, are not aware of the service, that we could do more. Like I said, the buses and, and because we do do events and stuff, but that don't, that doesn't capture people that are isolated at home.
I'll tell you what I was thinking about. I helped set up in my ward a tenants' association and have managed to get quite a few leaflets for them to have on their table and it's, and it does work. So I'd say, can we, I'll speak to you after, but I'm going to plead for some for my TARA. Thank you.
While we're discussing that then, can I promote something else? Can I also get some of the leaflets?
You absolutely can. Get in touch with me.
Support that we're trying to distribute around the city.
Yeah, I'm sure, yeah.
Councillor Grokett.
I think Elsie raised a really important point there. And if there, if there is literature and information, it'd be useful to just, I think, share it with councillors so that we do have it, so that we can give the correct information to people without looking for it. And, and certainly as we go around many and varied groups, we can hand it out as well and that would hopefully, you know, assist with the issue. Yeah, absolutely.
Always looking for opportunities and welcome your suggestions.
Yeah, we can also distribute it to our networks, you know, because we all know community groups that can have a poster, for example, or, you know, visit people, houses and things. So, yeah, that would be good. Councillor Eris wants to come in.
Yeah, it's on the same point. It's just, you know, the, the other route is through the local area committees as well. I don't know whether, how much you use the local area committees, but, you know, I think that's, that's a, a useful way of, yeah, putting literature out on tables and things like that, you know.
We, we do, but I think your suggestion for yourselves is a really good one and I'm more than happy for both leaflets if you're happy to take them. Thank you.
Councillor Fitz.
Thank you, Geoff. Thank you for the report. Just following on from this. I understand you might not go for this because it'll be higher effort and possibly higher costs. But I'm just thinking it'd be great to have the leaflets that will get out to some people at TARA's and possibly at LAC meetings. But quite a lot of these people might be quite isolated already. So I wonder if some kind of like leaflet just through doors might be possible. I don't know if that would be on resourcing or if you could procure something to do that. It would be expensive. I just wanted to check.
I can just pick up on, obviously I am new to the authorities, so I'm still trying to figure everything out. But what I can say is we've got, I've got some personal experience of, of really thinking about how we promote these services, the kind of comms campaign, and particularly about how we reach people in communities that are not maybe, you know, connected to the internet, you know, the usual kind of routes that we try to direct people down. So one of the things that we did recently was actually a Sky advert. And it was, it wasn't as costly as we would have anticipated as perhaps some leaflets and a leaflet drop were. So I think for me, it's about really looking at the communities in Sheffield and thinking about what would work best for each of those individual communities. So it's not kind of one cap fits all, all approach.
Just one other thing to add, I think, is that, you know, a lot, a lot of the services that go into people's houses as well, that's the OTs, the OTAs going to do assessment or social workers or some of our colleagues in, in the health service, fire service, that they're all aware of citywide alarms. And so, so that, you know, it's, it's kind of like first port of call. If somebody knows, then, then hopefully they'll get back. It's the people who kind of struggle and don't get in touch that I think you're talking about specifically that might benefit from a, a leaflet.
Thank you. I have councillor Rooney.
It's just, I've recently been spending quite an amount of time in my doctor's surgery. And there's this television in the corner that advertises all sorts of stuff, bits across it. I don't know whether you would, the cost of that might be prohibitive, but you could, you possibly have a look at sticking it on a doctor's surgeries.
Alexis, dentist and a doctor's for posters, can you could sit there for ages and you read them over and over again? Alexis wants to come in on here.
So, thank you all members. So it's a really good point. And what I think I was going to say is we had the report earlier on about our approach to early intervention and prevention, in particular, we're focused on information and advice in our Sheffield directory. And one of the key next steps from that is to do that wider comms campaign about our whole service because there's a range of different supports that we offer to people. And what we want to have is, is that, is that really being accessible to communities and to people across Sheffield. And particularly people who are seldom heard, who can't speak up, which is really important. So, so this will, I could give the assurances, this will be part of a wider framework of, of kind of information and advice as we're next steps in relation to that. But also the, the suggestion around the GP surgeries is absolutely a good suggestion. And that's something that we are wanting to build in as we are bringing in colleagues to go and support us to the next step. So, so I think very good call. And absolutely agree, it means all of us do think alike. But we have, perhaps I could give the assurances that that's the, the, the intention as the next step of that information and advice. So hopefully that's helpful and we'll be able to co-produce that with members so that really we could really reach out to communities across Sheffield, which is, I think, really important.
Councillor Meadsen.
Thank you, Geoff. I'm just really curious how this, how this area dovetails with the newer developments in tech and labour care. So we've sort of looked at that under early intervention and prevention. There's a tech, there's a section on tech there, isn't there? And, and there doesn't seem to be anything in this report about the move, you know, more to putting in more technology in people's homes to help them stay safe. There's some really remarkable stuff. That's, it's really obvious when you think about it, isn't it? Like monitoring how many times people go through a door and, and any changes to that. So where does that all fit in with this?
There, there are some of the projects that are, are got underway at the minute. We've got a couple of different providers that we're using. We're using Houzz and Anthropos. So we are using those monitoring systems to sort of assess people and, and identify where there's additional needs or, or where there's not, because sometimes there's conflicting information between the service user and the family or, or other informal carers. So that's, that's in its, in its very early stages. But I think it's helpful what you've talked about in terms of the comms and where that fits. Because it's moving to, from doing for people, that task orientated to, you know, enabling people. And that change, that culture change is quite difficult and that comms fits in with the wider stuff that we've talked about. But there is, there is all that's underway as part of citywide care alarms and it is starting to move at pace at the moment. You know, it's been, it's been very small pilots, same as your meds, with being, that's been a small pilot of fifty people. That's starting to move at pace now, so it will feed into all this.
Thank you. There are some recommendations. Can I also recommend to members to ask to go and visit both the, both teams? Because we went last year across party and it was a really good visits, wasn't it, Steve? So I really recommend getting in touch with the team and go and see it for yourself. I was rescued off the floor, do you remember? I had a fall. Yeah, I had a fall that day. And yeah, it was very interesting to see actually in, in action. And likewise with the enablement thing, team, it was really, really good. So there are serious recommendations against, they are all for noting because it's a progress report. They are on page two hundred and fifty-eight. So we asked to note the adult health and social care equipment and adaptation and citywide care alarms performance update and progress made. And notes that an annual report will be brought to a future committee. That's what we agreed last year, isn't it, that we get an annual report? Endorse the financial recovery action underway, including a dedicated programme between November twenty-three and February twenty-four. Approve the update equipment and adaptation criteria and request that the strategic director of adult care and wellbeing provides the committee with updates on progress and outcomes in relation to the performance and financial spend on a six, six monthly basis. Are we all happy to agree those? Brilliant. So that concludes the meeting. The next meeting for this committee is on the thirteenth of December. That's a Wednesday at ten AM in the morning. And thank you everybody and thank you for all members for reading all the papers and all the authors of the reports for putting them together for us.